Jessica, you're gonna start off again just as like last week, right?
Yeah, you can say your opening and then I will.
Alright, it's fine. Okay. Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Jurzak. I'm chairman of the South Kingstown zoning board of review. Okay, this is a meeting of the South Kingstown zoning board of review. Members present are Robert Cagnetta, John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, Thomas Daniels, William Mark, and William Rosen. Okay? Also present are the building zoning and building inspector Wayne Pimental, okay? Jessica Spence, who is the South Kingstown administrative support associate. Amy Goins, okay, who was the assistant town solicitor, okay? Who is the executive assistant to the town manager, okay? Alright, the way this works is we have five regular members and two alternate members. At the present time, we only have four regular members and two alternate members. The regular members vote as long as they are here and as long as they haven't recused themselves. If one of them is not here or isn't as tonight, where we only have four regular members, then we go right down the list and there's alternate one and alternate two. So in tonight's case, the voting people will be Robert Cagnetta, John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, Thomas Daniels, okay, and William Mark, okay? Alright, you're here for either a variance or a special use permit, okay? This board is a quasi judicial body created by South Kingstown ordinance pursuant to state law. We don't follow the strict rules of evidence and we operate in what we believe to be a fair and equitable manner. We attempt to let everyone speak. We please ask that what you what you speak about is relevant to the subject at bar, okay? The way it's gonna work tonight is that when I'm done giving this little presentation, okay? Jessica Spence will go over the whole Zoom things to show you, to tell you how you can how you can get on and speak. And and then what will end up happening is that we will then proceed just as we proceeded a regular meeting if we were in the town hall, okay? Now, how will that be? Well, what will end up happening is I will read each petition in line, okay? You will be asked to then state your case, okay? You'll be sworn in, alright? You can also have other witnesses testifying your behalf, okay? The board members will then ask you questions, alright? After that, okay, we will then open it up to other people who want to speak either in support or in opposition to your petition, okay? Again, the board members will ask you questions. We'll ask those people questions, okay? When everyone has had their their has when everyone has said what they wanted to say, okay? Before a vote was taken, okay, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. With regard to variances and special use permits, okay? We have to have four of the five members voting, okay, voting in favor of the petition, okay? If we don't get four out of the five, then it does not pass, alright? Couple other things, please. Last, I know most of you were here for last meeting, so I'm not gonna go into great depth on what you have to show for a variance or for a special use permit. But please recall that I informed you that the only power we have here is what's given to us, okay? By the zoning ordinance. So if we want to grant, okay, a variance or we want to grant a grant a special use permit, okay? We have to literally fill in the blanks. There are requirements set out in the zoning ordinance, okay? And in order for us to grant you the relief that you seek, okay? We have to make sure that we fill in all the requirements, okay? And that's the reason, okay, one of the main reasons we're gonna be asking you questions. So don't feel we're picking on you, okay? That's the reason we're doing that, okay? Alright, oh, one last thing before I move on to Jessica. We're gonna end at 10 o'clock. When I say end, we're not gonna cut off what we're speaking, what petition we're speaking on, but we will take no further petitions after 10 o'clock, okay? If we haven't called your petition by 10 o'clock, then what will happen is that we'll go over to the next meeting, okay? Alright, and that's one of the reasons, please, I ask that you make sure everyone who's speaking, okay? Be as brief as possible, get your points across, and please, okay, try to be relevant. Okay, Jessica, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This is Jessica. Thanks for joining us again. I'm just gonna go over just a few of the technical things. We are gonna keep all of the applicants, we're gonna keep them muted, and their video is gonna remain off until they are called. At the time their petition is called, then we'll make sure to turn your video on and you can unmute yourself. Any supporting documents that the applicants have previously submitted, if you need to show them during your testimony, please direct me and I can bring up anything that has been previously submitted. For people in the audience who may wish to comment on the application, they will be told that it's now the public comment and what they will need to do is to raise their hand. So to raise your hand on the bottom of your screen, there should be a little blue, a little hand and you and you'll click it and it says raise or lower hand. If you're calling in by phone only, it's a little bit different. So you need to use the star nine function to raise your hand and then the star six function will mute and unmute you. A couple of things to keep in mind, if anyone's having any difficulties with anything as far as technical, we do have a question and answer function. That question and answer function should be used only if you are having technical issues. We're not gonna answer any questions in regards to the petition being heard in that forum. You need to wait for the public comment section to raise your hand. And every piece of information that we have on any of these applications is available to view online at southkingstownri.com under current zoning applications, so you can look there. Excuse me, you'll also find the agenda there. So if you're having any technical difficulties, there's some troubleshooting tips on the agenda. So that's basically all I have to say. I'm not sure if Amy has anything that she needs to address tonight prior.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just one quick thing, as Jess mentioned, this is Amy Goins, special legal counsel, the current zoning application.
We lost you.
Lost you, Amy.
The current zoning applications can be found on the town's website and navigate to the building building inspection department and there are under that tab. And can we just mention the dates of the next few zoning meetings so that people know and indicate about our May meeting, the new date for that?
Sure, we are going to be holding the May meeting on May 27th, which is a week later than originally scheduled. And then the June meeting is June 17th, but let me just double check that. It is June 17th, so we have May 27th and June 17th as our next two meetings.
Sure, just the last thing I'll say is we all had our first experience with this last week. I think it went relatively well, although they were mostly uncontested applications. As I mentioned, we will be expecting to operate this way for at least through the summer, at least if not beyond that. So that's it.
Alright, okay, again, Jessica and Amy and for that matter, board members, as I asked last week, don't be afraid to tell me if I'm missing something here using this platform, alright? I want to make sure we do this the right way, alright? Alright, let's start with the first petition, okay? The approval of the revised written decision, re petition of Garrett Homes LLC. Attention Gary, I know I butcher names, Ecolito 6 Williams Way, Harwich, Connecticut 06791 for special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct the 7,545 square foot retail trade structure. The planning board advisory development plan review was denied on October 15, 2019. Lot size is 50,666 square feet. A special use permit is required for zoning ordinance section 301 schedule of use regulations and section 907 standards of relief. Owner is South Shore Mental Health Gateway Healthcare, Inc. for premises located at 1860 Kingstown Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map 40-1 lot 125 and is zoned MU mixed use. Use code is 55-retailtrade up to 10,000 square feet of GLFA gross leasable floor area. Okay, use note, this petition was denied on November 20th, 2019 with a written decision recorded on December 9th, 2019. The matter was subsequently appealed to the Rhode Island Superior Court by agreement. The board and the applicant, the board will adopt a new written decision in this matter. A public hearing is not required. Okay, Amy, you wanna talk on this a bit?
Sure, I circulated, this is Amy Goins, special legal counsel. I circulated this draft amended decision to board members last week or actually just circulated it. It reflects, I would say, a fuller explanation of the board's unanimous decision of denial that was originally made back in November. If this written, I did not receive any comments from the board. If you have edits, I can make those edits tonight and we can see the edits reflected in the new amended decision, which will be recorded and added to the certified record for the Superior Court. Then the matter will be briefed and decided by a judge.
Okay, board members, questions? Any comments to Amy?
I do not.
None? Everybody is okay with this? Okay, alright, if that's the case, would someone like to make a motion? Approve this?
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Tom Daniels, board member. I move the approval of the revised written decision regarding the petition of Garrett Homes LLC. The entire description of the petition was read into the record by the chairman. And I move that we accept the revised decision.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniels. Would someone second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark. Any discussion? Okay, now, Amy, I don't, this is not a public hearing, so I guess that's okay, alright? Let's have a vote, alright? There's no discussion. Alright, Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta.
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo.
Aye, Lauren, aye.
Okay, Mr. Jurzak, aye. Okay, motion passes 5-0, okay? We all set, Amy, on that?
Yes. May I ask a quick question, please, Mr. Chair? I wanna.
Whoa, 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 who is speaking?
Lauren Jones, I'm the lawyer for the applicant.
Alright, please tell us, we want everyone to be able to know who's speaking, so.
I apologize. I simply wanted to make sure that the five people who voted, the five members who voted are the same five members who voted the first time.
Yes, they are.
That's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, alright, let's go on to the next one, okay? Petition of Matunik Beach Properties, 62 Birchwood Drive, Narragansett, Rhode Island, 02882 for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to install a temporary bathroom facility, which will consist of an eight foot by 34 foot portable trailer. This will replace the existing bathrooms, which were located with the store, both of which are to be removed. Lot size is 50.2 acres. A special use permit is required for zoning ordinance section 203, special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification, and section 907 standards of relief. Owner of the property is Matunik Beach Properties for premises located at 240 Cards Pond Road, assessors map 92-1, lot 9, zoned R200. Okay, alright, is there someone here for that?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jessica. Would you like me to read a list of what I have in the record?
Thank you, Jessica. Go right ahead.
So from Matunik Beach Properties, I have a complete application dated 3/2020. I have an owner authorization form. I have a site plan. I have a portable restroom trailer spec sheet and I have in a butters list in radius map.
Okay, alright, is someone here from Matunik Beach Properties?
Yes.
Okay, will you give us your name, please?
My name is Robert Thorson.
Okay, spell it, please. Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, tell us what you want to do.
Basically, as you know, because of the erosion down there, we had to build a new office and store facility about 1,000 feet back from the beach. And we are in the process of demolishing our old store and office, which also contained beachfront bathroom facilities for our residents to use while they were on the beach. So we are looking to place a bathroom trailer just to the west of the existing location of the old store so that we can maintain having beachfront bathrooms for the residents.
Okay, now, will that that structure will be only there during the the beach season, is it? Tell us about that a little bit.
Yes. We are, we are purchasing the bathroom trailer and it will only be parked there for five and a half months or about five months during the season in which people can use their cottages. At which point, we will tow it to our maintenance garage and we will actually store it inside the garage for the winter.
Okay.
And in the event of a storm, we can pull it out of there very quickly. The way it's gonna be set up is that it's gonna, the septic is gonna be pumped into our existing septic system or not pumped, gravity fed. And the existing water line going to the old store now will be used to service the trailer with water. So in the event of a storm, we can disconnect the three quarter inch garden hose. We can disconnect the sewer line with a Fernco fitting that it's gonna be attached with. Take the ramp off, the eight, we have an ADA compliant ramp for the handicap stall and we can just pull the trailer out of there, you know, within an hour.
Okay, so anything else you want to tell us?
Not that I can think of, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman? Anyone?
I have a question. This is Rob Cagnetta. The, you'll have your own capabilities of moving the trailer, like you won't have to call somebody in or?
Correct. Yeah, we have a heavy duty truck capable of towing the trailer, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Board members?
This is William Rosen. Just a quick question, I think I know the answer to this, but this is not gonna be available to anybody. It's only gonna be available to the residents of the park, right?
Yes, I mean, I can't say for certain, somebody walking the beach won't just walk up to it and use it. I mean, I hope they don't, but I can't say that with absolute certainty, but it's designed to be just for our residents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Tom Daniels. Do you require any other further permitting with regard to hooking up to your existing sewage system?
We have to, we have an application into Coastal Resources Management Council because it is within 200 feet of the eroding bluff, which we have already started.
Okay, you don't have that approval yet?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay, well, thank you, sir, okay?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this petition?
I am not seeing anyone, Rick.
Um, Jess, sorry, this is Amy Goins, special legal counsel. Can we just reiterate again how someone on a phone would raise their hand?
Sure, so if you're calling in by phone only to raise your hand, you're gonna use the star nine feature. And then if you hit star six, that will mute and unmute you.
Okay, any anyone raising their hand? Again, I'll ask, anyone, anyone want to speak in favor, opposition, petition? Raise your hand. No one, Jessica?
No one.
Okay, alright, board members, does anyone have an issue with this?
No.
No.
No? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Who's gonna make the most? John?
I didn't hear anybody, yeah, sure, okay.
Go ahead.
Most is that we approve the petition of Matunik Beach Properties, 62 Birchwood Drive, Narragansett for special use permit under our zone ordinance. The applicant is seeking to install temporary bathroom facility, which will consist of an eight by 34 foot portable trailer. This will replace the existing bathrooms located within with the store, both of which are to be removed. This is a special use permit required under, a special use permit is required under our zone ordinance 203 and of course, our 907 standards. The owner of the property is Matunik Beach Properties. Robert Thorson appeared tonight, told us what was going on. Essentially, they're gonna demolish the existing bathroom and it looks like they're gonna be moving it to the west of the existing bathroom. It's gonna be a portable bathroom that they can move away during a storm or outside of the beach season to indicate it's gonna be, the trailer is gonna be there for five months of the beach season and it'll be plumbed into the existing septic there by gravity. They're demolishing the old bathroom as well as the store that was there. This special use, this is a special use because there are multiple homes on one lot in the form of trailers here at the Matunik Beach property. The special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance. The use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection. And the granting of special use will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or imperia, the intent or purpose of the ordinance or company to plan. We don't have to consider ingress and egress, that won't be an issue for this. Off-street parking certainly not an issue or any of the other matters that we need to worry about. We've dealt with many matters with the good people over at Matunik Beach Properties and this seems like a sensible thing to do given the issues that they're having with erosion and keeping, keeping buildings away from the break front where the property in the beach is very sensitive. So with that, I move that we grant the petition and tie it into any drawings that they may have submitted. I'm confident that CRMC is gonna take a good look at that and use their good judgment in passing on this as well.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Bernardo. Would someone like to second it?
Second, Tom Daniel.
Second by Mr. Daniels, okay, discussion. Alright, no discussion, let's vote, okay? Mr. Bernardo.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, motion passes 5 to 0, okay, good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright, next one, okay? Petition of Malachi and Bonnie O'Connor, 17 Border Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879 for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to construct a 16 foot by 32 foot detached accessory structure. The lot is a non-conforming lot of record and reduced setbacks are allowed. The proposed shed will be located 10 feet from the left side property line. The required side setback is 15 feet. Relief of five feet is requested. The accessory accessory structure will be located 34 feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback is 40 feet. Relief of six feet is requested. The structure is also located within the front yard setback, which requires relief per section 503.1, lot size is .6 acres. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section 207, non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements, section 503.1 accessory structures, and section 907 standards of relief. The owners are Malachi and Bonnie O'Connor for premises located at 17 Border Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map 90-3, lot 56, and is zoned R30. Okay, go ahead, Jessica, tell us what's in the file.
Alright, we have an application dated February 2020. We have an owner authorization form. We have site plans, elevations. They were dated in February of 2020. We have in a butters list and radius map. We have applicant exhibits one through four, which are photos of his property. And then we have one letter of objection from Joanne Langham, received 4/21/2020.
Alright. I don't seem to have, or do I have a copy of that? Yeah, I do have a copy of that, alright. I won't read that letter until the petitioner is done, alright? Okay, is there someone here for the petition?
Yes, I'm here, Mal O'Connor.
Okay, will you spell your name, sir, for the record?
M-A-L-A-C-H-I, Malachi, well done. O'Connor, O apostrophe C-O-N-N-O-R.
Alright, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Alright, go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Thank you very much for considering this. I appreciate it. My wife and I have been permanent residents of South Kingstown for 20 years as of last month, March. And we're recently retired. We're planning to build a garage workshop. We have a couple of particular problems. One is that we do not have a basement. We have a crawl space, you know, like a four foot space for part of the, under part of the first floor, but it's quite damp and we can't really store anything there. And in addition, we don't have a garage. And so what we would like to do is build a garage workshop in order to be able to store, you know, bicycles, equipment, park a car. And also, I'd like to have a workshop space where I can, you know, do projects, house projects and probably some lathe work if I can. We're both retired, so we have more time than we had for a long time. So I'm looking forward to be able to do that. There are two kinds of relief we're asking for. The first one, and Jessica, could you just put the drawing up, the property drawing?
Sure, just give me one moment.
Okay, nope.
Is that the one you're looking for or?
Yeah, that's perfect. That's great. You'll see at the top of the drawing on the north side is Border Avenue. And on the, you can see that our house, the main building on the left side of the driveway is, you know, non-conform, the lot was non-conforming when we bought it. It's, the house is about 20 feet from the property line. And the septic system, when we remodeled the house, put a new septic system in and the pipes to the drain field go under the driveway over to the right-hand side, as you can see. We'd like to position the workshop between the drain field of the septic system and a beautiful large maple tree that you can see just on the south side of the, where the workshop ideally will be, will be placed. We think that that way we can, you know, drive in the driveway, make a left turn into the garage. It'll be nicely placed in a place that does the least amount of adjustments to the, to the landscape. And so that's, I just wanted you to see where we'd like to place the workshop. And, um, so that's, I just wanted you to see where we'd like to place the workshop. Uh, Jess, could you go to the, the, um, photo from the driveway?
Sure.
Thanks. Uh, here.
That might not be the one you want.
Yeah, no, that is, that's exactly right. Um, here, I'm standing at the, uh, edge of the driveway, looking toward, uh, our neighbor's house, uh, Joanne Langham and her husband Harvey Dan. And, um, you'll see that, uh, we'll have to move the fence a little bit on the right-hand side, but to give you a feel for it, sixteen feet goes from right, pretty much where that, the fencing is jutting out there, uh, uh, to the left side of the rock, uh, on the other side. And you can see the post in the distance is where the fifteen-foot mark is when our surveyor, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-foot mark, where our survey marked it. Because initially, we thought we had to have a twenty-foot, um, we had to deal with a twenty-foot, uh, issue. But then, thanks to building and zoning, they let us know that it was actually a fifteen-foot, uh, setback. And as you'll see, we've got these cherry laurels planted. There are actually two windows on our neighbor's house. You can see one of their bedroom windows, the other one you can't see because of the cherry laurels. And we're planning to plant more cherry loils, cherry laurels, or, you know, if they would like, we'll put in Arbe Vida, uh, whatever it may be, because, um, we understand, uh, their concern about, um, seeing the building, which will be, uh, sixteen, it's one-story, the, the top of the ridge will be at sixteen feet. But, uh, you can see that in the, in the drawings that are attached. Um, so in order to be able to make this work, we need, we need, um, six feet, from the, uh, forty-foot setback from Border Avenue, which is, uh, kind of about three or four feet to the right of that rock. Um, and, uh, is where the forty-foot mark, uh, is, and so we'd like to come back six feet from there. Uh, could you show the, uh, the, uh, next view there? Uh, not that one, that's my wife's perennial garden, that one there, thanks. So, I wanted to give you a feel, I noticed last week, uh, you raised, often raised questions about what's the distance, you know, from, from the house to the, to the, uh, proposed, um, shed?
This is your neighbor's house, right?
This is our neighbor's house from Border Avenue. I'm looking at it from Border Avenue, you can see the two windows now. And I, uh, I measured it, it's about twenty-three feet from our neighbor's house to the stockade fence on the right. And then what we're asking for is to go, to start our, uh, garage workshop, the gable end of it, uh, ten feet on the other side of that fence. So we're asking for a five-foot variance from the fifteen feet. And, uh, so that, I just did, wanted to make sure you had a sense of the distance, in case that was helpful. I think that, uh, that's about it. Uh, and be glad to answer, you know, whatever questions I can.
Okay, uh, Mr. Connor, what are you gonna do in the workshop? You say a workshop, what does that mean?
Well, uh, I, I do some woodworking, I'm not, uh, I'm, I should say, I'm not, uh, proposing to have a business there or anything like that. What I wanna do is be able to work on various kinds of projects that are house projects, whether it might be building, uh, you know, a table, or it could be, uh, you know, doing some turning work on a lathe, or just repairing things that need, uh, repair. Um, it's that kind of, uh, uh, you know, like, when you've seen your typical kind of garage workshop where a homeowner uses it to, um, to do various projects that need to be done. But it's not something that I'm gonna be in every day, and I'm not gonna be in there all day, every day. It's not a business opportunity, in other words.
It'll be heated or no heat?
I'd like to heat it, and this is something that we've gone back and forth on about how to heat it. Um, we're thinking about either wood or gas. And, um, we can talk about the objection letter later, um, about that. I, I had not decided which way to go, quite frankly. But I'm not gonna, I don't wanna have to heat it, um, necessarily all the time, I'd like to heat it when I'm in there, you know, working. And it's, uh, only about five hundred, little over five hundred square feet, so it should be pretty easy to heat up, uh, when I need to.
Okay, okay, board members, go ahead.
Question, Tom Daniels, board member. Mr. O'Connor, I'm assuming that the structure will be on a concrete pad?
Yes, mhm.
Okay, and tell me why you can't move the structure five feet to the west?
Um.
Comply with the current ordinance?
Well, I think that I was thinking about having ten feet to be able to make the turn. At the same time, if you all decide, uh, that, you know, I should keep it at fifteen, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can make the adjustment to do that. So I'd like it ideally because I wanted to kind of tuck it back a little bit, so it, it wasn't too visible. I, I don't want it to be a big building, I want it to be something that's kind of tucked in. That was my thinking originally.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the, uh, the plot plan, you have fourteen and a half feet from the existing driveway to the, uh, front of the structure, which would be garage doors?
Uh, yes, I don't, I, I, I don't know, maybe it is fourteen, I didn't think it was that much, I see what you mean, um. I measured it the other day, and it, it, but yeah, okay, mhm.
So if you moved it five feet to the west, you'd have, uh, nine feet from the driveway to make that turn, would that not be enough?
I think it would be, you know.
How many vehicles do you plan to, to park in there?
Probably, uh, probably one, I might be able to fit, uh, two, but they'd be, I'd have to back one out to get the other one out, so it's, it's not wide enough for two vehicles side to side.
Okay, so the workshop portion of the building would be to which side? North, east, southwest?
Um, east.
East, okay, so that would, so you would, you would park your vehicle approaching from the west, and then, uh, the workshop part would be on the, uh, in front of the vehicle, say?
Say that again, Tom, I'm sorry, I didn't quite.
Okay. If you're, if you're approaching the garage from the west, and you park your car in the proposed building, the workshop portion would be in front of the automobile, is that correct?
Yes, to the eastern side, mhm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, um, you can easily comply with the ordinance for moving it five feet, in my opinion, but see what, see what the rest, rest of the folks have to say.
I guess my, my question, is it more of a workshop, or is it more of a, just a garage parking? And if it, if it is more of a garage parking type structure, is there a reason why you just wouldn't go straight in off the driveway, like, straight into it, going towards the back, where there's plenty of room?
Uh, yes, um, what's not shown on the drawing is that on the right-hand side of the driveway, going right up to it and a little bit over it, we have these enormous, um, two-story rhododendrons that were planted about sixty years ago. And so when I figured out how to, I don't, I need to save them, so the roots, you know, with their roots and everything. So I'd have to start pretty far, a little bit further over to the west than I'd like to. And then what would happen is I'd have to cut down a lot more of that maple tree than, uh, branches than if I come in, uh, perpendicular to the driveway.
Okay.
When I measured it, it just, I tried to, I looked at both ways and then decided that that really wasn't gonna work. I thought it would initially, but.
Okay.
Tom Bernardo has a question.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, the smokestack, is that, is that in anticipation of your heat function or your, uh, woodworking equipment exhaust?
Smokestack?
Yeah, there's a smokestack on the drawings of what looks like a smoke. That's, I'm misreading that.
Oh, I think that, uh, that was, uh, if we had a wood stove.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would answer my question by being for heat purposes.
Yeah, mhm, right.
Mr. O'Connor, this is Tom Daniels again, how wide is that driveway?
Oh boy, that's a measurement I didn't take, I can, uh, can fit two cars side by side with a little bit of tightness, but can fit them.
I, I mean, I viewed the property and, and I see where you wanna put the structure, and it seems to me you could make the turn from the driveway into the garage with nine more feet. It wouldn't seem to me to be a, an issue if you move the structure to the east by five feet, comply with the ordinance, and call it a day.
Yeah, I take your point, I, I think I can, you're right, I think I can.
Okay, anyone else? Questions for this witness?
This is Rob Cagnetta, uh, now, Mr. Daniels, you, you're mentioning the side setback, but he's also asking for a, a front as well, correct? So.
Right.
Um, so it's the, you're asking for thirty-four feet from the front, uh, when, uh, a front is forty. So if you moved over five to the west, it would take care of the side, but it'd still be within the five feet in the front.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Yeah, you're, thanks, Rob, I, I do need, I am requesting the relief of six feet on the, the border F side.
Okay, anyone else, questions?
With, uh, this is Bill Rosen again, uh, with respect to that front yard, doesn't the, uh, ordinance say that you can't build an accessory structure in the front yard? Mr. Kementel?
That, that's actually part of his petition, I believe, Bill.
Okay.
He's asking for relief from that because of the situation. Okay. All right. Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, hang on, uh, Mr. O'Connor, because we're not, I'm now gonna read the one letter I have, and then we're gonna open it up to other people, okay? All right, uh, the letter, I'm not sure if this was a letter or if it was an email, I believe it's, I can't. Was this an email or a letter, Jess? You're, you're muted, Jessica.
Sorry, it was an email.
Okay, an email, all right. All right, uh, as the owner of Thirty-nine Border Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, I am opposed to granting the variance to my neighbor, the O'Conners of the adjacent property Seventeen Border Avenue, South Kingstown, requesting, I believe that the town building and zoning codes, including setback requirements, are established for good reasons, and it is the best interest of all affected property owners to adhere to them for now and future values of properties. My specific concerns are the noise that a workshop will generate and smoke that a wood-burning pellet stove will produce in such close proximity to our house. Our bedrooms are situated directly in line with the side of the proposed building. I feel that the proposed placement of the building will adversely affect our quality of life and the property value of our property. Sincerely, Joanne M. Langen, uh, Joanne Langham Revocable Trust. Okay, all right, I'm now gonna open it up. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in support or opposition to this petition?
There is, Mr. Chairman.
There is, okay.
They just put their hand down. Oh, okay, their hands back up, so one moment, uh. The first one is gonna be the email, hdanclan@gmail.com.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, will you, will you tell us who you are and then spell your name, please?
Yes, this is, excuse me, Joanne Langham, um, J.O.A.N.N., the A is capitalized, last name is Langham, L.A.N.G.H.A.M.
Okay, uh, do you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to the building, um, I think it's a, a little big, but I'm not opposed to the building. I just don't want it within the, the setback. I'm also concerned with, uh, looking at the, the sketches, again, there are outdoor lights on the building, and, um, that just is, you know, more, um, light pollution. So, uh, I, I don't want more Arbe Vidae, they block out the light. Um, the Arbe Vidae that the O'Conners have planted are pushing against our fence as it is in the back of the yard. Um, so I would just appreciate it being, uh, setback for the, the, excuse me, for the, the fifteen feet. And I'm also concerned about, um, the wood-burning stove. We do get smoke from their house, um, as it is, uh, in, in the, the burning season, and that's okay, that, you know, that, that comes with life, but I don't need a, another stove that much closer. And, uh, the illustration doesn't indicate part of the garage, so that would put any of the equipment all back towards, towards our, uh, property line.
Okay.
Those are my objections.
That's it?
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions of this witness? Board members? All right, well, thank you, man.
I do also want to mention that the, uh, the house is really seventeen feet from the borderline, um, if you include the, the, the cellar door. The building foundation might be a little bit further back, but it's really seventeen feet to the board, the property line.
Your house, is that what you're saying?
Yes, not twenty-three, it's seventeen.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, anyone else wanna speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I have a David Calabrese.
Okay. David? You're muted, David, you have, there you go.
Just unmuted it.
Okay, go ahead, David, spell your name.
David Calabrese, C.A.L.A.B.R.E.S.E.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Uh, I live at Forty Border Avenue, which is across the street from where the proposed, um, workshop garage is being, uh, proposed, and, uh, I just wanna say that, um, I personally have no problem with the structure and the location of it. The, uh, the O'Conners are very good at maintaining their property very well, they keep things neat, and they've always been very cooperative with, um, you know, lighting and things like that. In fact, um, they and myself use green lights around our houses because they cut down on, um, on, um, lighting, you know, uh, taking away from the skylight. And so we tend to do those kinds of things, and I think that they would do the same thing with this property. I doubt if they'd be using white light around the building, they most likely would be using green light, um, although I haven't discussed it with Mal. But I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to the, to the thing or the front side lot requirements, um, I think, I think they'll do a good job and they'll keep it neat and clean.
Okay, board members, any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, there's one, uh, actually, David Calabrese just raised his hand again, I don't think he was quite done, I'm gonna unmute him again.
Okay. Good, go ahead, David. You go ahead.
I was trying to lower my hand, I'm not used to this.
Okay, no, we're not used to it either, but, okay, so you have nothing else to add?
Not at this time, no, I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir, okay.
There is one more then, uh, it's R.H. Morse eighty-four, we're gonna allow them to talk.
Okay, uh, whoever you are, unmute yourself, so you can talk, there you go. Okay, would you give us your name, please, and spell it?
Sure, Harry Morse, M.O.R.S.E.
Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
I live around the corner from, uh, both, uh, Mal and Bonnie and Dave Calabrese. Um, I'm a full-time resident, and just a couple of observations. I really certainly wanna vouch for the character and integrity of the O'Conners. My wife and I really have the highest regard for them, and I know, since we moved here five years ago, um, they've been really active and a participative member of the community and highly respect all their neighbors, and I truly believe that. They have a very tastefully designed, New England-style home that we admire a lot. Very quaint, quiet, they make no noise, they're the nicest people I've met, quite frankly. And I have every confidence that the request for this specific variance was thought out very detailed, as you can tell by Mal's discussion and his presentation. Um, and it really was solely this variance going to the left was certainly just to ensure that the new structure will be positioned in a manner that will provide really safe entrance from the street for their vehicles, for their vehicles, and also really to be aesthetically integrated onto the property and really respecting everyone's interests, including all the neighbors who have spoken or even objected. And I'd just like to add one other comment. One is, and I'm not saying it jokingly, I know when I was listening to Mel speak and the questions were well posed, like, what are you going to do in there? You know, build a make a manufacturing company. I can only see Mel maybe making a birdhouse kind of a thing. It's kind of like the the room to kind of play around in, and I know he probably wants to do a lot more than. My concern would be noise and all those kind of things that were talked about, and I would certainly think that would be far from that, and I'm sure he'd enjoy it. And the other last quick comment. My prior home in Pennsylvania, I had to go up a driveway and make a hard ninety degree angle into my two-car garage, and I can tell you, it is never easy to do, and based on some of the observations, least comments that I do respect, I think everyone is underestimating the necessity to make a wide arc turn into left, not to have to make about seven, eight turns to get into a straight entrance to there. That's just kind of my final comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone who wants to ask this gentleman questions? Any board members? Okay, all right, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
No one else is raising their hand.
Okay, with no one else, then I think we probably have everyone has been allowed to speak. Okay, let's just poll the board very quickly. Tom, how do you feel about this?
I would prefer if the sideline setback were within the minute when it within the ordinance, but we'll see what the others think.
Okay, how about you, Bob, Mr. Kagneta?
Um, I agree with Mr. Daniels. I mean, I think it a lot of the properties are very unique in their shape, and I can certainly understand placement. Or they have it, but with the objection of the neighbor, I I'm more thinking that that the side setback would be important to them, so just change it that if they sat within the side setback, but the front were as they requested, I think I'd be fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Rosen, what do you feel?
Uh, similar.
Is that it? You're a man, a few words there, Phil.
I think Tom's idea is a good one. So I would go, since I'm not voting, I would go along with an amendment that put it within the side.
We value your opinion, Mr. Rosen. Okay.
Thank you.
How about Mr. Mark? What do you feel?
Um, I mean, I I I agree with what Tom said, but again, with the the Butters letter and response, I mean, I'd ask, you know, like Mel, you know, if you put yourself in their shoes, their bedroom's right there, and I'm kind of going back to, you know, why isn't it straight off the driveway? Are we sacrificing a couple of rhododendrons for, you know, not having a workshop up near, you know, somebody's bedroom window, or whether or not it's a wood stove or gas fired? You know, at the very least, I'd like to see him move move the set from out of the setback and, but I mean, take take into consideration what the Butters is saying in their in their opposition.
May I respond?
No, not yet, Mr.
Okay.
Please.
We'll get back.
Yeah, Mr. Bernardo, what do you feel?
Well, it seems like the applicant, Mr. O'Connor, has already yielded his hardship argument by indicating he could live with the fifteen-foot setback, which I would have been glad to listen to a hardship. I don't think I would have had a problem with it, but it sounds like he's already given it up, so it's fine by me.
Okay, you have no problem with the front yard?
Uh, no problem whatsoever.
Okay, all right, what did you want to say, Mr. O'Connor?
Oh, just to to Mr. Mark, maybe it's maybe not pertinent now, just that I had, I take Joanne Langham's objection seriously, and and I think that every single one of us has the right to object, and I respect that. And in addition, I had attempted to speak with my neighbors about this before, but they decided not to, apparently. So you know, I would have been glad to talk about this without having it, you know, come before this body, including the whether it's a wood stove or not, that those, you know, I I think people, I think they have important concerns, and I respect them.
Good. I also agree with all, everything every board member said, okay. I I I think that I certainly have no problem with the the front yard, okay? And I have, but I do have a problem with the side yard. So having that in mind, how do we feel? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the petition of Malachi and Bonnie O'Connor.
This is John Bernardo making a motion.
Thank you. Seventeen Border Avenue, South Kingston, Rhode Island, for a dimensional variance under ordinance. The applicant is proposing to construct a sixteen by thirty-two-foot detached accessory structure. The lot is non-conforming, and roofs, reduced setbacks are allowed. The proposed shed will be located ten feet from the left side property line. The required side yard setback is fifteen feet. Relief of five feet is requested. The accessory structure will be located thirty-four feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback is forty, therefore, six feet is requested. The structure is located within the front yard setback, which requires relief per section five oh three. The lot size is point six. This is ordinance two oh seven, and again, five oh three point one, and the owners again are Malachi and Bonnie O'Connor. The petition of Malachi O'Connor testified that he has no garage, he has no basement, and he's looking to construct a accessory structure that will serve both as a garage as well as a workshop. He indicates he is a woodworker, so not by trade, because he and his wife are both retired, so he will use the shed to go in and do some busy work for projects around the house to store bikes and other equipment and other things that he couldn't store in his base in a basement or a garage. He indicated he would like to fit at least one car in there, maybe two if possible, and the applicant, Mr. O'Connor, indicated, the way I understood it, that he was actually okay with positioning the shed within the side side yard setback, which would be fifteen feet from the property line. So I'm going to take the position that we don't have to discuss whether hardship is needed because he seemed to be okay with that. As far as the front setback, he's looking for six feet of relief, and I would find that this this shed, this gives me this accessory structure is constrained by an existing driveway, which he wants to certainly use to drive his vehicle into it, as well as a OWTS system to the north, some trees to the south, and perhaps some rhododendrons to the west. So it makes sense where it is, the side the side seems to work to support both the garage and workshop. I did hear from a number of neighbors, some of them characterize themselves as objectors, others were were character witnesses for Mr. O'Connor and his wife, and spoke very highly of them. In fact, a couple of them indicated that they were confident that Mr. O'Connor would make the right neighborly decisions in the use of this workshop, which means, which means to me, it appears that he will be cognizant of any noise or perhaps excessive smoke or other nuisance issues as they would affect his neighbors. So I take that into consideration when I'm making this motion to approve. This is a variance, the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the land and structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. The hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. The granting of this variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the comprehensive plan. Plenty of other houses in the area with sheds and/or garages. This would appear to be the least relief necessary, and the way I'm reading it, it appears that the applicant has already yielded one of his requests for relief anyway. And as to this dimensional variance, the applicant has proved that the hardship to be suffered by him, absent granting this relief, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. So I would move granting this petition, subject to the drawings and renderings in the application. Period.
Okay, just just to make it perfectly clear, then your motion does not include the relief from the side yard. So that he would, he
No, because I'm taking the position that the Mr. O'Connor has yielded that request by indicating during his testimony that he had no problem putting it at the fifteen feet. So I don't know if I'm doing the right thing, but that's how I understood it.
Okay, can I, Amy, can you just give us some guidance on that? I mean, I
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, motion by Mr. Bernardo, would someone like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, second by, was that Mr. Mark?
Mr. Kagneta.
I can tell, I was second by Mr. Mark. All right, is there any discussion? All right, let's have a roll call. Okay, Mr. Bernardo.
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Kagneta.
Hi.
Okay. Daniels.
Hi.
Okay, and Mr. Jurzak, hi, okay, motion passes. Okay, good luck, sir.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Best of luck making it through.
Okay. All right, the next one, petition of Raymond Dion, okay, seventy-four, Thomas Leighton Boulevard, Cumberland, Rhode Island, oh two eight six four, for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance is follows. The applicant is seeking is seeking to construct additions onto the existing single-family dwelling. The lot is legally non-conforming, which allows for reduced setbacks. The side yard setback on the right side is eleven feet. The addition along the right side will be eight feet from the property line. Relief of three feet is requested or required. The rear side, the rear yard setback is thirty feet. The addition in the rear of the dwelling will be twenty-seven feet from the rear property line. Relief of three feet is required. Lot size is point one five acres. A dimensional variance is required for zoning ordinance section four one schedule of dimensional regulations table and section nine oh seven standards of relief. Owner of the property is Raymond Dion for premises located at thirty-three Washington Street, assessors map eighty-six dash three, lot one one five, and zone R twenty. Okay, Jessica, will you read in what's in the file, please?
Sure. We have an application dated March twenty twenty. We have an owner authorization form. We have an unofficial site plan dated two seventeen twenty twenty. We have an OWTS repair repair plan dated February nineteenth twenty twenty. We have floor plans and elevations dated two seventeen twenty twenty. We have a land survey dated five six two thousand nineteen. We have an Butters list and a radius map, and then we have an objector's letter from Stephen and Diana McCumber dated March twenty seventh twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dion, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can. Okay, would you just spell your name?
Okay, my name is Raymond Dion, D I O N N E.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead and tell us what you want to do.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Again, my name is Raymond Dion. I own property with my wife Linda at thirty-three Washington Street. I am petitioning for dimensional variance, a three-foot setback relief on the right side and a three-foot setback relief on the rear of the property to add additional living space to the existing home. The existing house was was purchased in two thousand and ten and was a three-bedroom and was reduced nine years ago to a two-bedroom to gain a little more living area. It will remain a two-bedroom after additions. Your property is a year-round home that we utilize four seasons and have no intentions of renting this property. The house has seven hundred sixty square feet living space. With the addition, it will increase it another five hundred sixty-four square feet with a total of thirteen hundred thirty-two square feet. Five of the homes in the surrounding area are between seven twenty-five and thirteen hundred square feet, and all are one-level structures. After ten memorial years in this area, we have made plans to make this a full-time retirement home. A need for one-level living space is due to my medical conditions and physical conditions over the years, working as a plumbing and heating contractor. I have spinal synosis, I have neuropathy, and I have knee issues that have compromised me and affected my quality of living. My safety and accessibility, as well as my quality of living, are the reasons for this one-level structure. We are looking to maximize this space to make it a comfortable home. And the reason why I bring up these issues because they're facts of my life, not that it's to make any decisions with the board. And with that, I've asked Jessica to bring up a couple of plans. One of them is is with the septic design, something I'd like to look at really quickly.
Sure, give me just one minute.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, I just want to bring this up to show the board what I'm up against here with this property, and because of the addition in the back and DEM rules, being too close to the existing septic system and the date of it, which there is no record of it, I'm required to install and put a new one and upgrade it, so which is what we're doing with with the de-nitification system, you know, and the found, you know, sand filtration system like most people do. And so looking at this now, I mean, it's you see what I have in the backyard. There's not a whole lot there, so that's pretty much all I have on this one. The next schedule I'd like to see is the next one with the site plan, the unofficial site plan. Okay. Nope, not this one, the other one with the, yeah, that one there. Great, thank you. So looking at the addition in the back, I've designed it. We spent some time trying to design this so we wouldn't impact the neighborhood, and if you see, the addition actually stays within the boundaries of setback rules. What I'm looking for in the rear is a three-foot setback for the stairs off the deck and a fifteen-inch bump out on the addition, because we want to put a fireplace in there. So I'm just trying to cover all my tracks here with far as zoning and setbacks. I don't want to assume they can put a set of stairs there, and if I know they can't. The real issue here is is on the side, on the right side of the property, but we're looking at it from the back. And so we're looking to add another six feet there, and we're going to put a master bedroom there and a master bathroom. And the other thing we want to do is we have no storage space in the house. We have a crawl space, a block foundation that has a footing. It's pretty secure, but there is no place to store anything besides the shed. And so in this new addition, it was recommended to us from the excavator and architect that we're going to dig down five feet or might as well go down eight feet and put a some type of basement storage over there, and obviously, we need some type of access to get to this. And and in order to get a decent set of stairs into any type of basement, you need a six-foot depth by five foot to put some type of bulkhead in there and build a legal set of steps. So you know, this is what I have here. Setbacks, when I went to town hall and reviewed them with the building officials, they've been reduced somewhat because of its under its undersized lot, which normally would be fifteen to eleven feet. So I'm basing that on that and taking my reductions from that. Other than that, there's an issue with the propane tank with my neighbor. She's thinking that we're going to put the propane tank on the side of the new addition. It's not going to be like that. I've designed it to fit in between I've designed it to fit in between the six-foot addition and the bulkhead opening. And that will keep it in within three feet, uh, of where it should be. You know, I, uh, I, I think, I, you know, I've, I think I've explained everything. On the right side of the property, obviously, is my driveway. I've got the deck with my entrance to the house and the entrance to the sliders to get onto the new addition. So, you know, it is a, it is a small lot and I, I've spent a lot of time in architect trying to plan this thing and, and not impact the neighbors, you know, and, uh, and, and present this the best way I can. So I think I've, I said what I had. If there's any questions, feel free to ask me.
How close is the, the McCumber's house to their property line?
It's 15 feet.
15 feet?
Yes, I measured it, yes.
All right, so the new, so that's from their property line? So that it would be then added, so it'd be 23 feet from your addition? Is that what you're saying?
No, it'd be 24 feet, yeah.
24 feet from the addition, okay. All right, okay. Uh, all right. Board members, questions?
Uh, yeah, Tom Daniels member. Actually, my question is for, uh, the building official. Does he need relief on the deck steps in the rear?
Yeah, Tom, because they're not the main steps, they're subject to meeting the standards for setbacks as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else, questions for this gentleman?
Yes, could, um-
Go ahead.
Could you explain that 24 feet again, from which, from which side?
Uh, it'd be the right side if you're looking at it from the street. So it'd be eight feet from the new addition to the fence. And then from their fence to their house, it'd be 15 feet. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good.
So that new addition, they're 15, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, what did you say, eight feet and 15 feet, right?
Yes.
Isn't that, isn't that 23 feet?
Maybe you're right, now, sorry.
Not 20, I know my- Okay, all right. Anyone else for this gentleman? Okay, well, thank you, sir. Hang on now, I'm going to read in one letter and then we're going to open it to the, uh, audience. Okay, a letter dated March 27th, 2020. It's dated South Kingston Zoning Board or addressed to 33 Re-33 Washington Street. "Variance, dear servants, we own a home located at 25 Washington Street in South Kingston. It is next door to 33 Washington Street, which is seeking a dimensional variance that will reduce the side yard setback to eight feet on the side that abuts our property. We object to the relief being granted. According to the website and South Kingston Tax Assessor, that house is located in the R20 zone, which is a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or point five acres. The lot at 33 Washington Street is point 15 acres, so it is already undersized. In the R20 zone, the minimum side yard setback is 15 feet. The existing house, we believe, is already closer to line than that. Our understanding is that the zoning ordinance only allows a variance like this where without the relief, there is no other reasonable alternative to enjoy a legally permitted beneficial use of one's property." Okay, according to the tax assessor's website, "Our neighbor's house was built in 1968 and has presumably been used and enjoyed in the 50 years since then. In light of that fact, that property does not meet the standards for getting a variance. Very truly yours, Stephen McCumber and Diana McCumber." Okay? All right, uh, is there anyone in the audience which is to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Um, Mr. Chair, before we do that, this is Amy Goins, Special Legal Counsel. I just want to note for the benefit of the objectors that no reasonable alternative language may still be in our ordinance, but it's a relic and it's been superseded by an amendment to the Zoning Enabling Act, which I know I've mentioned before. But again, for the benefit of the objectors, the no reasonable alternative clause is stricken from our ordinance by operation of state law, as you know.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goins, Goins. Okay, is there anyone in the, in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
No one's raised their hand.
Yeah, you want to just tell them how to do it again, Jessica? We'll refresh everyone's recollection.
Sure, so if you're calling in by phone, you're going to hit star nine, that's going to raise your hand, or you're going to hit star six, which is going to mute and unmute you afterwards. If you're on a computer, um, you should see a little, uh, button if you go over your name that says raise hand.
Okay, again, is there anyone who want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Raise your hand. No one?
No one.
Okay, all right, this is no one is, is in favor of. Do you have anything else to tell us, Mr. Dion, or?
Uh, no, I think that's, I said even I need to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bob Cagnetta, how do you feel?
Uh, I, I, I feel the petitioner has sort of made his, uh, case as to, uh, wanting to expand the home. Um, and I understand that the, uh, what he's describing as the right side of the home uh, is, um, you know, a, a reasonable addition. I, it's certainly not an egregious, uh, six feet. Um, I know as a practical sense, it's not really worth adding just three feet. Uh, so, um, and, and I feel that the, the eight feet is, uh, within reason. So, um, and the back, I, I don't have any issue, I, uh-
Okay, so you would vote in favor?
I would.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
I, 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 I agree, I have no, no problem with the back or the, or the, the extent of the side, um, encroachment. And, uh, it seems like it's all within good reason, I think, for, for the applicant.
Mr. Rosen?
Um, I have no objection. Uh, I certainly am sympathetic to the idea of having one-level houses around here for us, for old folks. And so I have no, it seems reasonable, it's a pretty small lot. He's doing the best he can.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, how do you feel?
No objection to the petition.
Okay, Mr. Bernardo?
Uh, well, as to the stairs, I think they are inconsequential obtrusive, so certainly no issue there. And no issue as to the three feet of relief he's requesting on the side.
Okay, I feel the same as all the other, everything you, your gentleman has said. So someone like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to prove the petition of Raymond Dion of 74 Thomas Leighton Boulevard in Cumberland, Rhode Island, 02864. Uh, they are seeking a dimensional variance, uh, for the property, uh, located on 33 Washington Street. Uh, Mr. Dion had presented his proposed plans to the board. The plans, uh, are an existing house, one story house that he is requesting to put on a side addition and a rear addition. There are, uh, constraints to the property, uh, with the, an existing deck on the opposite side of where they would like the addition. Um, the, uh, left side of the house, or, or he's describing as the right side where the addition is going to go, um, is a, is a modest six feet that they're requesting to add, which would put them within three feet, uh, encroaching on the, the setback in the back, on the side. And the back, uh, encroachment is merely a, a set of stairs leading to, uh, the deck. Um, so, uh, the, there was one objector, uh, the McCumber, that, uh, talked about, uh, having the, uh, house sort of fit within the setbacks, uh, is, is really the ideal way for them. But, um, in my opinion, uh, these, uh, requests are not egregious and they sort of make sense based on the existing plan of the house and, uh, the property. So I am making the recommendation to pass as approved or as, as presented. Um, they, uh, the applicant supplied, uh, several, uh, plans. Um, one plan is dated the 17th of February, 2020, which shows the proposed addition. Uh, and then there are stamped plans, um, as well that, uh, reveal the floor plan and elevations of the building. Uh, the building will be placed, uh, relative to the plot plan. Uh, the, um, we find that the hardship the applicant is seeking, uh, relief is not due, I mean, is due to the unique characteristics of the land and the structure, um, and will not, uh, change the surrounding area. Um, and, uh, this is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, the board finds that this hardship is, uh, not the result of any prior action of the applicant, um, and does not result in the desire of the applicant's real, realize a greater financial gain, uh, because as, as we spoke of, this is, uh, more of a desire of using the, uh, property, uh, of the first floor or the main floor of the house. Um, we find it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance, um, or the comprehensive plan. Um, and, uh, that is because, because it is, uh, the house placement on the property as it exists, um, uh, does, does suit this position for, uh, the, the addition. Um, so it's not going to change the, the area at all. Uh, and we find this is the least relief necessary. Um, and, uh, that's because, again, they're only asking for six feet on the one side and three feet of stairs in the back. Um, and we feel that the hardship suffered by the owner, uh, if this is not granted, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Um, because as I said, to, uh, not have the stairs in the back is, is the inconvenience as well as, uh, only adding three for side addition. Um, so with those, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta, would someone second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark, any discussion? No discussion, let's vote. Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak? Aye. Okay, motion passes, good luck, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Everybody stay safe, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Petition of Mark Janetto and Darcy Lynch, 15 Hendrick Street, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a mudroom-covered porch and sunroom addition to the existing single-family dwelling. The maximum lot coverage in the R10 zone is 25%. The lot size is 8,652 square feet. The total existing and proposed building coverage will be 2,880 square feet, which represents 33% lot coverage. Relief of 8% of lot coverage, which represents 717 square feet, is requested. The required front setback is 25 feet. The addition will be 7.6 feet from the front property, from lot line. Relief of 17.4 feet is requested. Lot size is 8,652 square feet. A dimensional variance is requested per zoning ordinance section 401 Schedule of Dimensional Regulations Table and section 907 Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is Mark Janetto and Darcy Lynch for premises located at 15 Hendrick Street, Assessors Map 57-1, Lot 182 and Zoned R10. Okay, uh, would you, uh, give us the, what's in that file, uh, Jessica?
Sure, I have an application dated March 2020. I have an owner authorization form. I have elevations and floor plans dated August 5th, 2019. I have a site plan dated March 18th, 2020. I have applicant's exhibit one, which is the proposed elevation and an existing photo. I have in a butters list and radius map. And then I have an objector's letter from James Duffy dated 4/16/2020.
Okay, thank you, okay. Uh, is there someone here on this petition?
Yes.
Okay, would you give us your name, spell it, please?
Yes, sir, uh, Mark Janetto, J-A-N-N-I-T-T-O.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, tell us what you want to do.
Okay, uh, the house as it exists is a 1,200 square foot, uh, 1950s cape. Uh, and Jessica, if you could call up that combination picture overlay with the, uh, architectural drawings, please.
Sure, just give me one second.
Certainly. Uh, as you know, if you've been any, in any, uh, low roof cape, you, uh, have to kind of stoop around and, and not really, uh, be able to walk standing straight up on the second floor. If you can slide back to the bottom there, please, Jessica. You can see the low pitch of the roof, so that the two rooms upstairs are finished rooms. However, about six-foot headroom exists only in the middle three feet. What we'd like to do is, uh, is minimize and use the least intrusive option to make those rooms usable. If you scroll up, Jessica, or us, uh, we're, we're requesting to raise the roof pitch, but not add walls to, and not add a full square footage on the second floor. Only make those rooms more usable. Uh, to do that, there is a very small stairway going up inside the front door. If you can go back down, Jessica, thank you. Uh, you can see the entryway, uh, and, and the road is currently, uh, about 20 feet, though the road property, uh, meets the property line at 40 feet. So part of our front lawn is actually, uh, town property. Uh, when you come in the front door, the steps are immediately in front and going up at, at a very steep angle and they're only 33 inches wide. So to properly access that addition, uh, that additional space on the second floor, we need to bring the first step out to right to the edge of the front door. They're equal with the front side of the house. Uh, part of the architectural drawings, uh, were to enclose that front stoop to enable us to make that an entryway mudroom so that the stairs then can be accessed. Uh, if you scroll up, you can see the, uh, proposed addition and it comes out no further than the existing cement stoop and the overhang over that stoop. We thought this would be the least intrusive option as well as, uh, just, uh, raising the pitch of the roof to allow us better access. Uh, let's see, we also request a proposed variance on lot coverage. Existing lot coverage is, uh, 2548 square feet or 29%. Uh, it was that way when we bought the house. The proposed addition to the mudroom and sunroom, uh, are 197 square feet and 135 square feet respectively. That's the total, uh, square footage addition is 232 square feet. That brings the coverage up to 2880 square feet, uh, which is 33%. Uh, the, once again, the hardship, uh, we worked hard to make this least intrusive and the hardship is, uh, we, there's no way to access that second floor, uh, comfortably without bending over to get up there and then, uh, to be able to use that space, uh, we need to raise the roof so that we can at least use the middle space. We're not, uh, once again, not adding a, a full second floor. The, uh, the total addition on the upstairs is about 320 square feet to access both those rooms.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir, that's it for now.
Okay. Board members, questions for this gentleman?
Uh, I have a question and I, I think I'll direct it to the building official. Uh, there are, appear to be, on the site plan, there appear to be two buildings. Are both of those considered when we consider the coverage on the lot?
Yes.
All right, so he's currently at 33% with both, both structures, is that correct?
Let me just go to my notes.
Uh, no, the, the addition, if I, if I might, Mr. Chairman, the addition will bring it to 33%. We're currently at 29%.
Okay.
Now, Wayne, what is the, uh, in, in the, what's the 17, 717 square feet requested? How, how was that calculated?
Hold on one second.
This is Amy Goins. While Wayne's looking that up, I'm just going to suggest, was that a backwards calculation going from 33% us, proposed to 25% maximum?
It looks like.
Was, okay, so that's, so that's not necessarily what he's going to add? That's what it's going to, with what's existing there and what he's going to add?
That, if, if he's currently at 29%-
you'd have to do the calculation from 33% to 29, but he's looking to legalize the proposed condition rather than the existing condition. So that's why you'd do the math from 33% proposed coverage. So it's relief of 8% where 25% maximum is required.
Okay. Yeah, I showed it as the total, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, Mr. Janetto, what was, what was, what, how many square feet are you talking about adding?
232, sir.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
232.
Okay.
The sunroom, sunroom is 12 by 12. And if you look, Jessica, can you go to A1 on the drawings? There we go, just scroll down a little bit. You can see we moved the sunroom to the left, that additional room. We tried to keep it tucked into the existing bump out where the kitchen is to minimize any intrusiveness. There are 42 feet from the house to the property line on that side, which we thought would not be an issue. But we are asking for a leave for that front entryway over the existing stoop.
All right, Mr. Janetto, one question I have for you. Tell me this, you've explained to us the whole reason for the variance in the front, and the hardship would be because of the stairs, because you want to, you want to make those non-dangerous stairs. But what is the rationale for hardship for the proposed covered porch or the proposed sunroof, sunroom? Why is there hardship?
Well, the covered porch made the entryway easier. Where the garage is on the west side of the house where the sunroom is, rather than walk across a lawn or anything, we wanted to enter the house onto a porch and then the entryway that way. The front door would not be on the street side. It would be on the west side versus the south side. Basic driveway.
This is the proposed porch.
Correct, sir.
Okay, all right, so you want the door on, so, and what's the heart? Why would, why is that any different than any other neighbor? Why do you have a hardship? You're asking for some very something here. And why?
Right, I mean, well, we're... So are we talking about the lot coverage variance, sir? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm really talking about, yeah, both variances. Lot coverage variance and the, and the front yard setback variance.
Okay, well, the front yard setback, I mean, we require that entryway. We asked the architect to make it palatable with the design of the house. We thought a covered front porch would be palatable and add to the aesthetics of the building.
Okay, but, all right, but you could do it without it?
Well, we could if we just did the entryway. That would still come out the same distance, except it wouldn't extend off to the left.
But it would add, it would add, the porch is adding additional square footage.
Yes, sir, that would be the case.
And what about the sunroom? Why is, what variance is there for the sunroom? What hardship is there for the sunroom?
I think my wife would kill me if I didn't include it in the plans. That would be a hardship for me personally. We, it's, in all honesty, sir, it's, that would not be a hardship. We thought we would like to add that due to the small nature of the house, and we, there was no other place to put a sunny space. We wanted to add that, and we thought we could tuck it in on that side. So I cannot honestly argue for a hardship. We just thought that that would, that would, and this being our retirement home, that that would be a nice space to have. And it was moderate, and again, tucked into the side of the house, 12 feet by 12 feet, not really extensive.
Okay, board members, questions for this witness?
Could I ask Jessica to put up the site plan, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I looked at this, and I don't see the proposed structures on this particular site plan. I'm not sure it's in compliance. Unless there's another site plan, I mean.
Yes, sir, there is another site plan. I thought that was submitted, but if not, our...
We, I have it, John, Tom, don't, the rest of the board members have it?
I have a proposed site plan.
Yeah.
I don't have it, I guess. You have that, Jess?
Yeah, Tom, mine shows the porch, and it also shows the proposed sunroom. And it is a certified plan by Michael Fontaine, okay, Land Surveyor?
Rick, if I can, Tom, that's the one I had sent you by email. You had asked me about that one.
Oh, okay, I just don't have it in the file.
I don't think it was in your package, I sent you an email.
Okay, so now, the setback, seven feet, how close to the road are you going to be with this? To the roadway?
The, from the roadway, the existing roadway, 27 feet, I believe.
Okay.
The yard extends out quite a bit.
Okay, so right now, from the edge of the roadway to the front step is 27 feet?
From the edge of the roadway to the front step is, I'm sorry, 17 feet, 17.7, to the front step.
So you're, so you're going to be, because I looked at the property, you're going to be within seven feet of the roadway, is that correct?
No, sir, no, sir, the roadway comes in seven feet, I'm sorry, the roadway comes in the front yard 10 feet. So there's no sidewalk. So on this street, everybody's property line is 10 feet in to their front yards from the roadway.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
Any other questions for this, Tom, are you done with asking?
For now, yeah.
Okay, anyone else, questions for this witness?
This is Rob Cagnetta. I was wondering, this plot plan, help me understand, there are two, there are two dwellings on one property? Is that what I'm seeing, like, am I reading this plot plan wrong?
No, there's a, there was a, I forgot the term, what is it? An additional structure or an additional?
An accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment, that's what it is.
So that two-bedroom ranch to the back, the northwest, is that?
Yes, sir, that's a, that's a, the two-bedroom apartment that's in there doesn't take up all of that space. The majority of that space is, or at least half that space is a garage. The accessory apartment just goes straight back. If you, if you draw a line straight back from front to back, that's the, correct, that's the, that's the two-bedroom apartment. The part, the bump out to the right side is the garage. And you can see the original owner of the property, he owned three houses and three garages. And what he did was give each house a garage. That's why our property kind of juts back and around that room. There was a really scruffy one-bedroom there that we decided to upgrade and rebuild and insulate when we moved to the property.
Because, I mean, you're almost looking at a lot that would be an incredible challenge to build on, conforming to the setbacks. It's just really bizarre the way, you have a 30-foot rear yard, but a 10-foot side. So it makes it a very bizarre shape. So you would, and then with the street actually being 10 feet outside of your property line, it gives an illusion that your front yard would be essentially inconformant.
Yes, sir.
Visually. So the, the structure you wanted to the southwest, which is the sunroom, is that, that's sort of squaring off the house, correct? I mean, that's not like you're coming out any farther?
Well, we are coming out six more feet, yes, sir.
But it's going to be flush with... Will it... Flowing with the other parts? Because I don't have that drawing either, I have the plot.
I think it's six, it's six feet past the back end.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, I'm sorry, that drawing's not available. Yeah, it comes out six more feet from there. We thought in a, we thought a sunroom of six-foot width really wouldn't be worth much.
Okay, so you're coming out 12 feet to the west?
Yes, sir, six feet, six feet beyond. And again, there's 42 feet between the house right now and that side property line.
Right, right. So, okay, so you're really only asking for a front variance with that, but?
Yes, sir.
But you're not coming out any farther, any closer to the front?
Than that existing porch. In fact, the steps that are depicted there are going to go away. So there's two big cement steps and then a big cement stoop that's covered right now. Jessica, will you go back to that picture?
So you're going to be sitting on the footprint of that existing block?
Yes, sir, you can see that block there, you can see that block lined up with the, with the, with the proposed spot.
Oh, I see, so these, these two images here are pretty close relationship-wise, so?
Yes, sir, I wanted to show you what, what the existing looked like and then what the proposed looked like. You can see the front door now facing the driveway, and that front porch coming out equal to the, where the stoop was, and then the steps going away.
So, oh, so are you, are you creating sort of another gable on top of the sunroom to extend that one room to the west up?
No, sir.
Is that, is that gable changing?
Yes, sir, that gable's coming off, and the slanted roof that you see there is going on. The additional... The windows are going to be covered by little small dormers on the front side.
Okay, so you're extending over the second floor as part of that sunroom addition is, is creating more floor space for the second floor?
No, the, the, the raising of the pitch of the roof will, will create the additional space upstairs or make the, make the current space more usable. That, sorry, sir, go ahead.
No, I was going to say that the shed dormer that's in the back in this image on the screen here, that shed dormer on the left side, is that making that second floor outside of those windows that you were just talking about usable?
Yes, sir, that's going to be closet space, that's about, that shed dormer doesn't go the full length of the house, only about one-third of the middle. So there's a third on each end, and then the shed dormer comes out over the middle third.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get to is that the space above the sunroom isn't going to be necessarily living or storage space?
No, sir, that is the empty space.
Okay.
That's dormer space, correct?
Okay, okay.
Okay, all right, anyone else, questions for this witness?
Yes.
Who is it? Excuse me, who?
John Bernardo.
Okay, go ahead, John.
So the two-bedroom ranch to the rear of the property, he rents that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that structure, you have to take in consideration that structure when determining your percentage of lot coverage, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're constrained by that existing structure then?
Yes, sir.
All right, got it. Oh, by the way, you should make more of an argument for the proposed sunroom.
I agree.
I'm serious, though, you need to make an argument because I haven't heard anything yet. And you're, you're going to be in trouble with somebody if you don't. My opinion.
Yes, sir, it's, as we said, 1,200 square foot cape. Again, our retirement home, that was the only way we could add a sunny space to the house in keeping it less intrusive and more comfortable.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions for this witness?
Hi, Bill Rosen here. I have a question for, that I didn't, I don't think I got an answer to, or somebody didn't get an answer to. There's two properties on this lot. Is that common in this neighborhood to have two properties on the same lot, small lot?
There's, there's an Airbnb across the street from us that, that does the same thing. He has a rental property and then in his garage, he has an Airbnb downstairs and a, and he lives up above that. So, so there is, right directly across the street, actually. To either side is just single-family dwelling, and across the street to either side, across the street to the right side is a single-family dwelling.
Okay, and so the, the two houses don't come into play with respect to the percentage of the lot coverage of the house? Of the houses on that?
Everything comes into place, sir, the garage, the accessory apartment, and the existing house structure.
Well, when I did the calculation, it seemed like 46% of the lot was covered by housing. And you're, you're, you're saying it's 33%? Am I doing the calculation incorrectly?
I'm not sure, I sat with the building inspector and the surveyor to go over the numbers, and that's, that's what we came up with. We came up with the dimensions of each of the structures, added them together, and that was the... That was the 2880 square feet that we had.
And that's clear, and it came out to be 33% for the house that you're talking about, your retirement home, and 13% for the other, which added up to 46% by my calculations.
I'm, I'm not sure I'm following.
Yeah, Wayne, can you clarify that?
Again, I don't have all of the dimensions of the houses in front of me, so it'd be difficult. I mean, as Mr., as Mr. Janetto had explained, we did go over those numbers, so Bill, perhaps you could forward those, and I can verify to make sure that this is in compliance with the numbers that are stated on here. But I can't see any reason to doubt that. But I would certainly would want to see those if there's any conflicting numbers.
Well, all I did was I looked at the square footage of the, of the house and the two-bedroom ranch in the back, and the square footage of the house that's presently there, and then add the numbers, I don't know. Seemed like a simple calculation to me, but, you know, this is not my bailiwick, I'm a chemist. I'm not a... Something else. Anyway, that's, that's my only comment.
All right.
I can certainly verify those, and if there, if there's an error, we would certainly, I would have to inform Mr. Janetto, we would have to come back before the board if there is an error.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Janetto? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Janetto. Can we, I want to now just read the one letter in the file, then we're going to open it up to the audience. This is a two-page letter, but I'm going to read it, okay? "From James Duffy, 1012 Hendrick Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, Subject Zoning Code Variance Hearing for 15 Hendrick Street, 42220. I am a 10-year ex-government employee, six years in Southeast Asia, U.S. Air Force, 1969-72, two years as a government contractor, status GS11E, 72 to 74, 75 to 81, U.S. Postal Service, Wakefield, Rhode Island. The present I own reside at 10 Hendrick Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, since 1999, directly across the street from the applicant for said variance. I have owned this pri- Directly across the street from the applicant for said variance. I have owned this property since 1987. The numbers of this property have changed three times. A since I have owned five properties on or abutting Cleveland Street consisting of five multifamily and one single family home since 1978. At present, I own two properties, 12th Cleveland Street and the property 1012 Hendrick Street I have. At one time or other lived in most of the homes as they were being restored and while raising my family of four boys, I built one home at 480 Bitter Street Farm Way where my family still calls, calls home. Rather than go into my professional history and knowledge of this neighborhood, I would just state what I believe is relevant and probative for the zoning board. I may be contacted anytime and questions may arise during your decision-making process. I'm aware I have no vote on this decision. My property is similar to that of the applicant. Legally non-conforming with two homes on one lot, the applicant is seeking for further variance within setback of the front property line. 15 Hendrick Street as exists encroaches on all four property setbacks. Variance of the lesser setback allowance on the street side front may not seem an encumbrance, but there is one concern for myself regarding this street. The following is for your information. Hazard Street as indicated on the zoning map is a 40-foot easement. The actual dimension of the street from grass to grass, north to south, is 18 feet wide. As there are no sidewalks or curbs or cuts, my driveway approaches the street opposite the applicant from the south and is 12 feet wide. My driveway, like most driveways in this neighborhood, is gravel and is exited while backing out. It is stressful for, and less safe when backing out and looking both ways, let alone the challenge when a vehicle is parked opposite my drive. It is similar to backing out of the two-car garage and immediately turning it to one or more both lanes. The problem exists mostly due to the narrow street and the usage subject to the practices of the property owners or guests. The South Kingstown Police have advised me that fast parking and the allowed on, on both sides of the street as long as emergency vehicles can pass safely and that there is no longer a winter parking ban. Two cars parked on opposite sides yet adjacent do not allow passage. In this neighborhood, parking with dual homes on a single property has always been an issue. Parking for 15 Hendrick Street is such an issue. Cars are required to park on street and in front of others, of another's property. Variance of 700 some odd feet seems minor, however, looking at the floor plan doesn't indicate the two bedrooms already exist on the first floor, which could make this a four-bedroom home even without, without the variance. If the second floor is added and the size of the home will double. The challenge I see is if and when this property becomes another B and B, as does the small house on the property, the parking here will become more inconvenient and more prone to hazardous conditions, especially at the egress of my property drive. I have lived with this neighborhood since 1978 and have known and appreciated all my neighbors. My house at 12th Cleveland Street still suffers and will always due to the variances allow property butters on both south end and north sides. I wish you well in making your decision during these trying times. Okay, does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Okay, again, Jess, will you tell them how to do it?
Sure. So if you're calling in by phone, it's going to be star nine to raise your hand or star six will mute and unmute you. And then if you're on your computer, if you hover by your name, there'll be little dots and you can hit raise hand.
Anybody, Jess?
No one.
No one? Okay. All right. No one, no one having, uh, raised their hand, uh, I have to assume then there is no other, uh, comments to be made. Do you have anything else to say, Mr. Genetto? Uh, you're mute, Mr. Genetto. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Anything else to say?
Um, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Duffy is incorrect. We're not doubling the size of the existing home. He also has, he's the person I was talking about. He has an Airbnb there. The only time that we park on, uh, the street in front of his house is when we have to move a car. We have a four-car driveway, two in front of two. And so when my wife needs to get out and I'm parked behind her, I pull out in the street and park on the street to allow her access in and out. Um, we have no plans to make anything anymore of Airbnb than already exists on the property. Um, so that's, uh, those are my final comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's, uh, let's talk about this a little bit, okay? Mr. Cagnetta, what do you feel about this?
I don't feel that Mr. Genetto is intensifying the use per se to, to say that more people are going to be occupying the building. Um, I, I, I feel it's reasonable, uh, in terms of use of the building to add to the front. Um, and I don't feel that the, uh, side addition, uh, sunroom is, 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 uh, egregious. It's not coming any closer to the front. Um, so I don't have any issue.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Um, likewise, I have, I have no problem with the front at all. Um, I think the, the relief he's seeking, although the hardship is a stretch, um, on the side is fine. And, uh, to me, it's more about raising, just raising his roofline for more usable space for storage and, uh, his quality of life, I guess. So I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Rosen?
Um, the only, uh, problem I have is with the lot coverage and the percentage in the calculation and if, if, if I'm an error, I, I'm willing to go along with it, but if the error is on my side, then I would reconsider this.
Okay. Mr. Daniels?
Uh, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Bernardo?
I think we have to go with the numbers as presented until proven otherwise. Uh, I don't have an, uh, issue with it. I think his relief is due to the unique characteristic of the structure on the property. Period.
Okay. Uh, I, I have no problem with the front. I do have a problem with the, uh, with the sunroof, uh, sunroom. I just feel that there's, that he hasn't shown us any hardship whatsoever on that. And I, I, uh, I mean, if we go with our, with, uh, with the zoning ordinance, okay, hardship is hardship and I'm not, I'm not sure. Uh, you know, I asked how he came up with this hardship and I, the, the answer really was not satisfactory. Okay. Uh, so I will not vote for this, but, uh, let's, let's get a, uh, you know, it's, it seems we have four votes, so would someone like to make a motion?
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
In light of what you, uh, what you just opined to, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
What does the sunroom do? I'm going to ask the, uh, applicant, what does the sunroom do to what you want to do upstairs in terms of, uh, the roofline? Does it have any effect on that at all?
Uh, no, sir, it does not. It was just, uh, we were redrawing architectural plans of the property and, uh, there, it's, it's a pretty dark living room in there. Uh, we had that space. Uh, and it's a small living room, uh, so we had that, uh, we looked at that outdoor space and thought it would make sense for quality of life purposes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, someone want to make a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Mark Genetto and Darcy Lynch of 15 Hendrick Street in South Kingstown, Rhode Island for a dimensional variance. Um, the applicant is seeking to construct a mudroom covered porch and sunroom addition to the existing family dwelling. Family dwelling. Uh, in this case, the, the maximum lot coverage in the R10 zone is 25%. They are seeking, uh, 33% lot coverage. And, uh, they are also seeking to have the front setback, uh, changed, um, from, uh, 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 about seven foot six, uh, less. Um, the relief of 17 foot four is requested. Um, this is, uh, in, in and around downtown Wakefield. Uh, and downtown Wakefield, as we know, and was built in the late 19th century and there weren't many rules in, in sort of making, uh, all these different plots. Uh, houses were added and subtracted over the years and, and this one is, uh, sort of unique in the fact that it has a turn of the century cape. Um, and I believe the, the applicant mentioned, uh, a later, um, addition garage, uh, or, or outbuilding to the back. So this is in fact a pretty unique property and how it sits. It does not conform with any of the existing, uh, setbacks for, um, either of the two buildings. Uh, the back, uh, accessory building, um, accessory apartment is essentially right on the, uh, about a foot and a half away from the property line on two sides. Six feet away from the property line on, uh, the west side. Um, and then the main house, which the applicant has made, um, the proposed additions to, uh, there is actually no elevation that is within, completely within the setback. Um, also, uh, something very unique about this neighborhood is the plot line is, um, versus the actual size of the road. The road is marked on the plot about twice the size it actually is in real life. Um, and the front lawn is sloped down to the roadway. So right now, uh, the actual road is about 10 feet, um, further away from the property line. Um, so it is the illusion that the front property line is a little bit more of a, a setback for them. Um, the applicant had, uh, proposed, um, through a series of drawings, um, the plot plan as well as the floor plans and elevations and roof lines of the, uh, structure, uh, which are relevant, the, the elevations are relevant in this regard because of the applicant's desire to add, uh, additional headroom space on this cape. Um, you know, in a, in a cape of this vintage, you'll get about 40% use, uh, out of that second floor because of the low ceiling heights. Um, he's proposing to increase those ceiling heights. Um, and then also make the floor plan more useful. Um, the front addition, uh, of the, uh, proposed, um, vestibule is to access, uh, you know, from the driveway side, uh, in, in, into the home more conveniently. And the, uh, sunroom that's proposed, um, is to provide, um, a bit more floor space on the first floor, uh, towards the driveway. And they're not coming out any closer to the front, uh, but they are obviously coming off the side, um, a bit more, about another six feet. Um, so the plot plan was from, uh, Michael Fontaine and that was um, back on 318 2020. There are the elevations and, and, uh, floor plans as well. Um, there was one objector, um, Mr. Duffy from across the street who also has a very unique property in, uh, the, the, the amount of buildings, uh, uh, and, and, uh, the setbacks on them. Um, if Mr. Duffy had mentioned the tightness, like the fact that the street is much skinnier than, um, than it is on the, uh, plot plan, um, and some difficulties in navigating, uh, the street when there are cars parked on the street. Um, but Mr. Genetto had mentioned that, uh, you can fit four cars in the driveway, uh, comfortably and that they only move things around. And again, they're not intensifying and adding bedrooms to the house. They're only making uh, living space, um, on the first floor, um, and to making it more convenient to, to, uh, enter the building. Uh, we find that the hardship which the applicant sought relief is due to the unique characteristics of the land um, and the structure, um, and is not, uh, due to the, the, going to change the general surrounding area. Um, this is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, and that is because, as I said, uh, the, the plot setbacks um, are, are not in accordance with the building at all. Uh, we find that the hardship is, there is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and will not result, uh, primarily of, of the applicant to realize a greater financial gain. Um, because there is no evidence to suggest that. We find that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, uh, because as I said, this is a, a pretty unique area in downtown where the houses, uh, uh, are clustered, um, in a, in a very, uh, um, organic way and not as planned. Um, we find that the le- relief is the least, uh, uh, necessary. Um, and, um, we find that the hardship suffered by the owner, if this were not uh, granted, would, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Um, because the house, um, is, is very difficult in its current design to, uh, utilize all the spaces. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta. Would someone like to second it?
Second.
Uh, was, was that Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark. Uh, any discussion? All right, if none, let's vote. Okay, Mr. Cagnetta?
Hi.
Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Bernardo? Yeah, Mr. Bernardo, I think you're, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
Hi.
This, okay. By Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Jerzak, nay. Okay, it passes four to one. Okay, good luck, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say for the record, uh, special thanks to Wayne, Jessica and Amy. They've been terrific in this whole process, providing great help and guidance and always answering the other end of the phone when we need, uh, when we need that guidance. So I appreciate their, uh, their work.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. All right, next one. All right, petition of Janet Elizabeth and Kenneth Greenberg, Ja- Janet Elizabeth and Kenneth Greenberg. 1470 Stallion Court, Bowie, Maryland, 20715 for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct the new one-story, single-family dwelling. The maximum lot coverage in the R40 zone is 20%. The lot size is 10,283 square feet. The proposed dwelling will be 2,336 square feet, which represents 22.7% lot coverage. Relief of 2.7 of lot coverage, which represents 2, 279.4 square feet is requested. Lot size is 10,283 square feet. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance 401, a section 401, schedule of dimensional regulations table and section 907 standards of relief. Owner of the property is Joseph and Michelle Boulay for premises located at 94 Winchester Drive, assessors map 63-3, lot 17, and zone R40. Okay, Jessica, could you give us what's in the file?
Sure, we have an application dated March 2020. We have the owner authorization form. We have a site plan. We have the vision appraisal field card and a butters list and radius map. We have applicant's exhibit one, which is the proposed site plan. We have applicant's exhibit two, which is the proposed floor plan and elevations that's dated April 2nd, 2020. We have applicant's exhibit three, which is the appraisal report, also dated April 2nd, 2020. In addition, we have four letters of objection. Three are from Bill and Jan Krollicky and then one is from Richard and Chris Bobbyer.
Okay. All right, is, uh, is someone here for this petition?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. For the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicants, Kenneth and Janet Greenberg. Uh, the applicants have entered into a purchase and sales agreement to purchase property at 94 Winchester Drive from the current owners, Joseph and Michelle Boulay. Uh, they're proposing to construct a single-family residence, which would meet all the setback requirements under the zoning ordinance. However, the applicant's requesting a, a lot coverage variance to increase the permitted lot coverage from 20% to 22.7%. Uh, it sounds like Jess already made them exhibits. I was just wanted to note that uh, the site plan prepared by Dan Harrington is applicant's exhibit one. The floor plans and building plans prepared by DLR dimensions are, uh, applicant's exhibit two. And the report prepared by George Daglì. And the report prepared by George Daglieri is applicant's exhibit three. The property is residential medium density in the town's comprehensive plan and is zoned R forty. As you can see from exhibit one, the property is ten thousand two hundred eighty-three square feet in size. It's approximately seventy feet of frontage on Winchester Drive and Quagmud Drive with approximately one hundred and fifty feet of depth. It's proposed to be sited in the middle of the lot, so no setback relief is required. There's a proposed OWTS to the rear of the house, and it will be serviced by public water. The house is one-story. It includes a twenty-two-foot by twenty-two-foot two-car garage located along Winchester Drive. If you go to the floor plans and the building plans, the living area of the house is an open floor plan containing a ten-foot by twelve-foot, four-inch dining room, a small kitchen, and a fifteen-foot by sixteen-foot living room. There's also a small mudroom and laundry. There's a master bedroom, and then two other small bedrooms would share a bathroom. And finally, there's a ten-foot by eight-foot covered porch at the rear of the house. The total living space is one thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet. The total lot coverage, including the house, garage, and porches, is two thousand three hundred thirty-six square feet, which equals the twenty-two point seven percent of lot coverage. In the total square feet, over the permitted lot coverage is two hundred and seventy-nine point four square feet. The proposed house is fourteen feet in height. The applicant could almost double their square footage if they went up two levels. However, Mr. Greenberg is disabled and requires the use of a wheelchair. So the house must be one level and an open floor plan. Mr. Greenberg also requires his own bed, so they need two bedrooms for themselves. And then their niece will be living with them in the summer, which explains the third bedroom. They were originally proposing a larger footprint, but it revised the house plan several times in order to reduce the amount of relief necessary and still meet their needs. As you can see from the floor plans, the rooms are as small as possible while still being functional. And as you'll hear from George Daglieri, this is one of the smallest lots in the neighborhood. And along with Mr. Greensburg's disability is the reason the relief is necessary. I also want to point out that in your zoning ordinance, the lot coverage percentage goes up as the minimum lot size requirement goes down. In this zone, lots are required to have forty thousand square feet of area, and the lot coverage limitation is 20%, which would be over eight thousand square feet of lot coverage if the lot size met the size requirement of the zoning district. However, if you go down to the R twenty and R ten zoning districts, the lot coverage requirement is 25%. The applicant's lot is just over ten thousand square feet, and if it was zoned R ten or R twenty, they'd be permitted over twenty-five hundred square feet of lot coverage, which indicates that their request is reasonable. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Daglieri provide his professional background and go over his report that he submitted. And then I'm going to have Mrs. Greenberg explain the process of designing the house and why they're requesting the relief that's necessary. So George, if you want to go forward.
I do.
Okay, well, George, excuse me, Richard Jurzak, here, we just give us your name and spell it, please.
George, last name Daglieri, D as in David, A G L I E R I.
Okay, George, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I wasn't going to cross-examine George. I was just going to have him explain his report.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then go ahead, George. Go ahead, George.
I'll be brief, Richard. As an appraiser and as a real estate broker, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I've done business in there for past thirty years and appraisals. We know it's an older neighborhood. It was platted in the forties. In fact, one house in there was built in the thirties, believe it or not. Approximately sixty properties in there, and there were one or two lots remaining, this being one. Primarily in a year-round neighborhood, which I think more like Wakefield than it is a waterfront neighborhood. It's homes range from about small house, four hundred and sixteen square feet, up to as much as thirty-three hundred and fifty-five square feet, with an average somewhere in the fifteen hundred square foot range. So the subject proposed dwelling at sixteen hundred and sixty-two square feet is pretty typical for this neighborhood. It is, Mr. Kenyon has already explained why the single-story home is proposed. And I agree with him that a significantly larger home could be built within the lot coverage requirements if second floor was added up to the thirty-five-foot height maximum. But this would not be in keeping with what exists there. The area surrounding this, the immediate area, mostly one-story houses, modest homes, similar to what's being proposed. So this makes much more sense in that location in terms of fitting in within the neighborhood. Does fit with the cop plan as a medium-density type of home. It is also important to note, this is one of the smallest lots in the neighborhood. Most of the lots in the neighborhood are running significantly larger, fifteen thousand, as high as forty thousand square feet. There are only a few that are in the ten thousand square foot range, and they're all right in this location. It seems these were all planted at the same time. It's apparent that the hardship is directly related to the size and the shape of the lot. I know that the Greenbergs went through a lot of trouble to come up with a house that would fit this lot, being a long, narrow lot, and that this was one of the only plans that actually worked and met their needs. My opinion that this use proposed, as proposed, would do nothing to, you know, hurt the character of the neighborhood or alter the character of the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. It's completely typical for what's there. That's it, John, any questions?
No, I think you hit on everything. If the board has any questions.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of this witness, board members? Anyone? No? Okay, no questions, John, go on.
Great. And then if I could next just have Janet explain the process of designing the house and also the need for one story and the lot coverage requirement.
Okay, Janet, would you spell your name, please?
It's Janet, J A N E T, Greenberg, Hanley Greenberg, G R E E N B E R G.
Okay, Janet, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we've worked on trying to design this house since December along with the architect, and my husband is disabled. He cannot walk more than maybe two or three steps without some assistance. So what we have tried to do is make it, we have to live in a one level. We've tried to live in a two level. We can build up, but he can't go upstairs. He has to have his own bedroom. He has to have his own equipment. There's equipment that raises him up and in and out of the beds and stuff like that. So we wanted it to be our last house, so designing the one level and trying to get it to fit within the perimeters of the lot, we did as much as we could. We made it as plain as possible to accommodate him, to accommodate us where we're comfortable, but mainly to accommodate him. And this is as small as we can get it. He requires assistance in a wheelchair and a scooter, and eventually he's going to need round-the-clock care. And we're going to need help with that. So we will bring people in. We have the two-car garage, but we have tried to squeeze it in within that lot, the width and the length to the best of our ability to accommodate him, and we have really tried. And we've come up with the last two point seven percent. We just can't go any smaller where it's not feasible, where we can't, you know, it's not livable, where he can't get in the doorways and out of the doorways with the wheelchair. So, anything?
Okay.
If I might add.
Wait, wait, George. You got to tell us who you are again, because there's people listening who don't have your picture.
Yeah, I forget. We're not all present. George Daglieri. If I might add, in the design of this house, as a Realtor, I do a lot of new construction, and I've been a party to the design of homes fitted for handicap use. And it is difficult to come up with a functional floor plan in the fact that you do need larger rooms to maneuver. You do need oversized doorways, and it's tough to cram the living space into a limited amount of area. And the limitations of the lot were a primary consideration in coming up with this house. And I did sit with Mrs. Greenberg and Dave Rigonesi, who drew the plan, and went over quite a bit of stuff, and I do know that she did work really hard to accommodate the site. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Janet, is there anything else you want to say?
No, Chairman.
Okay, all right, anyone, any of the board members have questions of Janet? Okay, how about of Mr. Daglieri, anyone? Okay, John, do you have anything else?
No, we'd just like to be able to address any of the issues that any of the neighbors may bring up.
Okay, we'll certainly allow you to do that, okay? All right, before I ask any questions from opposing or people in favor of this petition. Jessica, you said there's four letters. I only have three, okay? You know, I don't think I'm going to read every one of these letters. Amy, is that a problem?
That's not a problem. Amy Goan, special legal counsel, you can just note them for the record.
Right, they're quite extensive. And all right, I have two letters, and then I'm going to ask Jess to pull the other one out. Two letters from Bill and Yan Krolicki, okay? And I'm just going to summarize these. They're not in support of the dimensional variance. No clear reason for it, just want a bigger house. No plan that helps identify how the variance will impact our property. Holding a meeting on the Zoom impedes our ability to hear arguments, and that they are objecting to the meeting due to their non-ability to be present face-to-face. The second letter, they didn't receive the full legal notice within fourteen days of the proposed meeting. The applicant's proposed site plan is unreadable, okay? And again, they have difficulties joining in the public meetings utilizing Zoom, okay? Do you, Jess, have the third one from them? You're muted, Jess.
Well, Jess is unmuting. This is Amy Goan's legal counsel. I don't see that they're calling in to tonight's meeting, but they were here last week. Or at least Yan, was her name Yan Krolicki, Jess? She was on the phone last week.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Jessica. Will you summarize the last letter?
Yeah, so the third letter is basically the same as what the letters one and two said. It's talking about that they didn't receive second page of the notice and that they contacted Mr. Kenyon's office. And then she's just going on about how she feels that it's violated her rights because of that. It should be noted that the second page that she's talking about was just a courtesy mailing that had the Zoom information on it. It was just sent regular mail. Mr. Kenyon's office did send the original one-page notice certified to all of the butters. So they met the legal requirement in that, if you, Amy, if you just want to verify that.
Yes, I can verify that. The only legal requirement for notice, other than the Secretary of State notice that we have to post per the Open Meetings Act, as far as special notice to a butter is required by the zoning enabling act, certified mail notice is the only legal requirement that has not changed or been affected by any executive order under the state of emergency.
Okay, all right, the fourth letter is from a Richard Babiar, B A B I A R, okay? My name is Richard Babiar, and I reside at eighty-eight Winchester Drive, which is just next door. Let me see, his concerns are with regard to the water table in the area and how it will affect his basement, okay? And runoff. He also has concerns of, he's asking that a self-retention fence be in place during construction. And he's asking if there will be any landscaping designs, okay? Says, looking at the plans online, it looks to me that the home will have vinyl siding, and it shouldn't have vinyl siding, okay? Other than that, he does not, there are no other concerns, all right? He does not say whether he's opposing this petition. He just makes these comments, all right? Okay, John, did you want to address any of those before I see if there's any people who want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the question of notice, we sent the first page, regular and certified, on April second. And then when we realized that the second page was not sent, we sent both regular and certified, the first and second page on April sixth, which was more than fifteen days before the hearing. We also emailed Mr. and Mrs. Krolicki, again, sent them the notice, and also sent them another copy of the site plan. As regarding the silt fence that is going to be required by the town, the town's going to require an erosion control plan and drainage mitigation when the building permit is pulled, so that will take place. And as far as the vinyl siding, I'm not sure how that comes into play here. They're asking for a lot coverage variance, not an architectural variance.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, John. Okay, does anyone want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Jessica, would you tell them how to do it again?
Sure, so I have Richard in there, so he's raised his hand. I'm going to allow him to speak.
Okay. All right, please, would you identify yourself?
My name's Richard Babiar. I live in Winchester Drive.
Okay, I'm having, Richard, can you spell your name, please?
R I C H A R D B A B I A R.
Okay, okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I would swear to go on record that I don't oppose the variance. Okay, I just weren't, I'm concerned about the water, the leader drains, that they be piped to the rear of the property, and that the foundation, it could displace the water table, and I'm worried about my basement flooding. I just want the house built responsibly with respect to water with regards to my basement. That's all most of this is about. The siding was just an opinion. Most of the houses are woodtraps, but not all of them. Sorry for my voice. I just had general surgery a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, all right, well, we understood what, we could hear you. Okay, board members, do you have anything, any questions to this witness? Okay, and Wayne, I'm assuming all of those those matters would be addressed during construction with regard to drainage and everything like that, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So erosion control plans and stormwater will be addressed by the public services during the permitting process.
Okay, fine. Okay, is there? Okay, fine, okay, this, this, is there anyone else? Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Jess, anyone else?
No, no one else has raised their hand.
Okay, no one else having raised their hand, okay? I'm gonna again go through the, the board members, Mr. Cagnetta, unmute yourself, any, any problems here?
No, I, I, I think the applicant has done a very reasonable job in, in trying to fit the property based on their needs. So I, I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Mark?
No problem at all.
Okay, Mr. Rosen?
No problem.
Hey, Mr. Daniels?
No problem with the petition.
Okay, Mr. Bernardo?
No problem.
Okay, I also am, am persuaded by Mr. Kenyon's argument that the truly is a hardship due to the fact that you have a ten thousand square foot lot in an R forty zone. If it were in our ten zone, it would be twenty-five percent lot coverage and you wouldn't need to be here today, okay? So I clearly think there's a hardship and also obviously there's a hardship due to the disability of the applicant's husband as well, so, oh, the applicant as well, you both, okay? All right, I guess where we can, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay, who's, who is that?
Bill Mark.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the petition of Janet and Kenneth Greenberg of fourteen thousand seven hundred Stallion Court, Bowie, Maryland, for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a new one-story single-family dwelling. The maximum lot coverage in the R forty zone is twenty percent, the lot size is ten thousand eight, two hundred and eighty-three square feet. The proposed dwelling will be two thousand three hundred and thirty-six square feet, which represents twenty-two point seven percent lot coverage. Relief of two point seven percent of lot coverage, which represents two hundred and seventy-nine point four square feet is requested. Lot size is ten thousand two hundred and eighty-three square feet. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section four zero one, Schedule Dimensional Regulations Table, and section nine oh seven, Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is Joseph and Michelle Blay, for premises located at ninety-four Winchester Drive, assessors map sixty-three, three, lot seventeen, zone R forty. The following individuals spoke as representatives for the applicant, Mrs. Greenberg, Attorney Kenyon, and George Daglary, sorry if I butchered that. The following individuals spoke in opposition through, or through letters, the Kralickis and Mr. Babiar. Both that seem to have not so much arguments regarding the relief sought, but more so, I think, aesthetics and/or building processes. The following materials were submitted, were the, the proposed site plan, the floor and elevation plans, the appraisers report, and any objective, objectors letters from the Kralickis. All three of them and one other objectors letter from someone else whose name I didn't get. Kind of agreeing with like the summation that Chairman mentioned, that if, if this were a, you know, well, you know, an R ten, R twenty lot, you know, in this, in this zone of, where everything else is like a ten, ten thousand, they'd have no problem, you know, with the, the site coverage on this particular lot. So I'm saying the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks is not due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Is not due to any physical economic disability of the applicant, excepting those physical disabilities addressed. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain, because this is a new structure and because of the aforementioned disabilities of the applicant. The board finds that the get, the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Again, getting back to the square footage of an R forty versus the surrounding, the surrounding lots. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary because they, they could, they could go up and, you know, have twice the square footage of, of a dwelling. But given the, the circumstances, I think that two percent, two point seven percent is certainly the least relief necessary. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience because at two point seven percent and given the turning and ability of having ADA compliant setups within the house is, is negligible at this point. So with that, I make a motion to approve the petition.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mark, would someone like to second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Daniels, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Bernardo, did you say something? You're muted. You're muted, John.
Okay, I think he said a, a not when he meant to say in is. When he was saying the hardship from which the relief is, is in fact due to the unique characteristics of the land. And I think he said not due, it might have been just a mistake or perhaps I heard it wrong, but I'm submitting that for clarification only.
Hey, Mr. Mark, will you clarify, clarify this?
Is not due to the unique characteristics of the subject land?
It should be, it actually should be is due.
It should be.
Is due?
Yeah, it should be.
The hardship is not.
No, I think, I think you have to modify that, I think the hardship has to be due to the unique characteristics.
The hardship, I'll amend my motion to say the hardship for which the applicant seeks relief is not
No, no.
is due.
Is due.
To the unique characteristics of the subject land.
Okay.
And not the general characteristics of the surrounding area.
Amy, is that, is that okay with a clarification like that, Amy?
Yes, we got it now.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, I think you seconded, will you second the change?
I will second the change.
Okay, all right, thank, any other discussion? Thank you, John. All right, having that in mind, no further discussion, okay, let's vote, okay, Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Mr. Cagnetta? Okay, Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, it passes with five votes, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, one more. Yeah, thank you. All right, one more, all right, the petition, we're on a roll here, everybody. Okay, the petition of Proud School CEO David Estes, forty-six forty Tower Hill Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, oh two eight seven nine, for dimensional variance on the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to install a synthetic turf field with athletic lighting and a scoreboard. The proposed field will be located two point two two feet from the left side property line. Twenty feet is required, requiring seventeen point seven eight feet of relief and this eight point five feet, five three feet from the rear property line. Twenty is required, requiring eleven point four seven feet of relief. The four light poles are proposed to be seventy to eighty feet tall. Maximum height allowed for accessory structures is fifteen feet. The maximum relief to sixty-five feet is required, okay? The height of the proposed scoreboard is thirty-five feet. The maximum height for accessory structures is fifteen feet. Relief of twenty feet is required from the height requirement. Lot size is twenty-four point eight one acres. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section table four oh one, Dimensional Regulations, section six oh three, Government and Institutional Regulations, G one zone, or G I zone, okay? And section nine oh seven, Standards of Relief. Owner is the Roman Catholic Bishop of Providence for premises located at forty-six forty Tower Hill Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Assessors map fifty dash four, lot nineteen, and is zoned G I, Government and Institutional. Okay. Jessica, can we get a listing of what's in the file?
Sure, we have an application and narrative dated March twenty twenty. We have the owner authorization form. We have a layout and material plan dated October third, two thousand eighteen. We have a letter from the Rhode Island D E M dated June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. We have the Development Plan Review Findings of Fact dated December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. We have a complete plan set dated November ninth, two thousand eighteen. We have an abutters list and radius map. We have applicant's exhibit one, which is photographic simulation package dated December twelfth, two thousand eighteen. We have applicant's exhibit two, which is the Viewshed mapping package dated December eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Applicant's exhibit three, which is supplemental information dated December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. I have a letter of objection from Attorney Thurston. And then I also have a, a letter of his withdrawal of the objection. Um, after he'd spoken with Amy, he, he changed, he withdrew his objection. And then I have two letters of objection from Attorney Stephen Angel, both dated in April of twenty twenty.
Okay, all right, who's here to speak for this?
I am, Mr. Chairman, my name is Richard Nadeau, N-A-D-E-A-U, partner at the law firm, Partridge Snow and Home. Also with me tonight is Mr. Estes from Proud, Ms. Kelly from Proud, Mr. Perry, and I believe there might be Mr. Arshinbo on from the lighting company. We are here, unfortunately, because we had gotten this approved last year in January. And through a miscommunication, the applicant missed the filing deadline to seek an extension of the approval that was received for this exact project in January of twenty nineteen. So that's why the dates on many of the items of submission go back to twenty eighteen, late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen, because it's literally exactly the same application that was set up and submitted last year and approved by a five zip vote by this board. We're prepared to go forward again to explain how we meet the requirements for the dimensional variances we're requesting. First off, we obviously state that, you know, there's a fairly large parcel, but much of that parcel has already been used. Therefore, as your decision last year read, it is based on the unique characteristics of the land that we are seeking as dimensional variances. You know, we are constrained by the location of other physical structural structures, the roadways and the parking areas that are in existence. The hardship is not one that is due to prior acts of the applicant. That was also part of your findings in the decision rendered last year. And clearly, it's not geared towards getting for greater financial gain for the applicant. It's a nonprofit, it's a school. This is actually a project that will help not only the students at the school, but also the community. As there are plans to make the fields accessible to the community under certain circumstances. I think that the review last year found that it will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Distanced with the comp plan, the planning board did render its opinion on that. And also, I would suggest that it's the least relief necessary under the circumstances. And I pointed to the decision last year in which the lighting was discussed. As a field, it's impossible to obtain complete one hundred percent dark sky compliant lighting. But the school has done as much as possible to ensure that the light stations that are being proposed are the least relief necessary in order to light the fields properly and make the fields usable. I'd like to ask John Perry, who has been the engineer on this project from the beginning and who spoke to you last year, to talk a little bit about the project to answer any questions. But we're cognizant of the fact that, number one, you've already heard all this. Number two, it's late, so we're gonna try to compress this as much as possible. But we are obviously open to whatever questions you may have at any time you may want to ask them. In terms of the objections, I would note that Mr. Angel's first letter was based strictly on the executive order issued by the governor, which was twenty dash oh five, which was then superseded by twenty dash twenty-five. And he acknowledged in a phone conversation with me that he no longer had any objection based on the new executive order. The second letter that he sent specifically says that the abutting property owner does not object to the petition. They just raised a few concerns, so I don't think technically it's an objection. It's just some concerns that have been raised that we have discussed with the, with Mr. Angel. And, and I think we've satisfied them, but, you know, I don't think they're on tonight. He told me that they were not going to appear and that they were not going to object, so with that.
They do, who does he, who does he represent?
Tower Hill Holdings, I think it's called. It's Tom Ritchie's property, it is Tower Hill Holdings. They are not direct abutters, there is a piece of property in between this school and the Tower Hill Properties real estate.
Is the Tower Hill property a residential property, or is it a, what, I guess it must be.
Mostly undeveloped at this point.
Okay, but it must, but it must be zoned, our, our. Do we know what is zoned, Amy?
I'm looking, I'm looking into that right now.
Oh, okay, I'm just trying to figure out who Angel is, why.
Steve Angel is an attorney.
No, I know that, the question is, who he represents?
Tom Ritchie.
Okay, but to get some perspective, what, where is that property?
As you're looking from, from Route one at the school,
Yeah.
Two properties to the left, there's a, there's a strip of property that goes into the back. And then his property is just beyond that.
Okay, I think it's forty-five sixty, this is Amy Goan's legal counsel. I think it's forty-five sixty-six and forty-five sixty-eight Tower Hill Road, zoned R eighty, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay.
That sounds right, Amy.
Okay, go ahead.
So unless the board has questions for me, I'm gonna turn it over to John Perry. And he can do a short presentation.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Daniels, a point of order, please. In the light, in light of the fact that we have no objectors, the testimony is essentially the same as the attorney has pointed out that it was a year ago. There are no objectors, can we move the previous decision and shorten this thing up?
Amy, answer that question.
I'm fine with that, if the applicant is fine with that.
We are fine with that, we believe that the, the application is of record. You know, testimony is only going to reiterate what's already on the record, so we're fine with that.
I so move it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's find out if there's anyone else in the audience. Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
There's one person left and she's not raised her hand. So again, star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, one last time, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Nothing.
No, no one there, okay, then let's, let's see if, Amy, if you have no problem with that. And, and if, if Mr. Nadeau is representing that this petition is exactly the same as what we approved before, all right? Let's just poll the board very quickly, Mr. Bernardo, any problems?
No, I have no problem, but I, I wonder if we should be incorporating the June thirteen, two thousand nineteen letter from D E M, their findings and recommendations and conditions. June thirteen, two thousand nineteen letter from D E M, their findings and recommendations and conditions. Because I don't think that was part of the decision from last time.
Correct, it, this is Amy, uh, it couldn't have been since, uh, the last vote was January, uh, nineteen. So, um, a, and when we get to the point of making a motion, I'm going to suggest we use the decision we made last year, at least for the, um,
Yeah.
the findings, um, and you can certainly incorporate that subject to, uh, any conditions, uh, and, uh, permits issued by D E M.
All right, John, so you're in favor of it?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, are you in favor of this, doing it this way?
I'm with the motion.
Okay, Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Cagnetta?
I'm good.
Okay, and I have no problem with it either, okay? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman first, I, I don't know if Mr. Daniels has, but I do have the book and page that the, um, January twenty-fourth nineteen decision.
I, I do have it in front.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, are you going to make the motion, Mr. Daniels?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
I move we incorporate the decision, the zoning board decision of January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen with regard to the Proud School Book, uh, L one six nine six, page four zero six, uh, which is dated one twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, in the South Kingstown, uh, Land Records. And I move that we incorporate that decision in its entirety with the addition of the D E M, uh, letter and report, and I don't have that date, Jess, maybe you can help me with that.
Sure, give me one second.
June thirteen.
What is it?
June thirteen, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, I moved that, uh, be incorporated in the original decision, and the original decision that was made by the board on January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen was made by Mr. Bernardo. It was seconded in that case by, uh, uh, Mr. Cagnetta and was approved five zero, and I move we incorporate they, I incorporate that entire decision with the addition. And the only other thing I would add is that the, uh, the decision being in compliance with the previous planning board decision, which did incorporate some conditions. And I move passage of that application.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniels, who would like to second it? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark, any discussion? Okay, if no discussion, let's vote, okay? Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, motion passes five to nothing, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, one, uh, thank you, Mr. Daniels.
You're welcome.
That was quick, uh, Jess, what else, we, we have to approve the minutes of last meeting?
Yes, please.
Would someone make a motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all right, motion made by Mr. Daniel, second by Mr. Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes, okay, uh, all right, Jessica, now tell us about the next meeting is now what?
May twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And we have, it's just four, um, petitions, there is, uh, two, they're all represented by Mr. Kenyon. Um, two are asking for additional extensions on existing permit, uh, special use permit and variance. There is, uh, one more, um, which is seeking relief for an OWTS. And then, um, Walsh, which is the Rosebrier one, which continued over, so that's where we're at.
Okay, uh, Jessica or Amy, have I missed anything? Can we look for adjournment?
You're good to go.
Good.
Okay, would someone make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
This is Rob Cagnetta.
By Mr. Cagnetta, someone second it? Second by Mr. Daniels, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good job, Jess, as usual.
Right on time.
No.